The second day of the seventh special session of the twentieth Congress will now come to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Adelk, Senator Aritos, Senator Piqueir, Senator Collant, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Panualo, Senator Berman, Senator Romalo, Senator Ursimal, Senator Wally, Speaker Semenam.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, twelve members are present.
We have quorum, the transact business this morning. Floor Leader Harper, reading of the journal.
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning to you and all honorable members, as well as our staff and all those who are observing our session this morning. I move to dispense with the reading of the jour-
It's moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor say yes, opposed no, motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
The next item is item five, presidential communications. We have numbers twenty dash four hundred twelve through number twenty dash four hundred fourteen.
Okay, Chief Clerk, assign those communications. Take note of those. They're important for the purpose of our session this time. Okay, next item.
Next item is item six, EBSM Supreme Court communications. There are no communications, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Next item is member communications. We have one and it's number twenty dash thirty-nine.
Assign that, Chief Clerk. Next item.
Next item is item eight, departmental communications. We have one and it's number twenty dash one hundred.
Assign that, Chief Clerk.
Speaker.
Uh, who's, Floor Leader Harper?
Thank you. May I just ask if someone can try to explain to me what is this beneficial ownership and peer?
Okay, Chairman Panualo, I think it's, is it under your R and D or what's it means?
Speaker, may I ask that the floor leader repeat the specific item it's referring to?
Uh, we're on, uh, departmental communication, uh, twenty dash one hundred. And there, there is that phrase there, beneficial ownership and peer, and I want to know, uh, what it means.
Okay, short recess, subject to call of the chair. It's back in session. Uh, next item.
Next item is item nine, agency or governmental authority communications. None, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Next item is item ten, state communications, none. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal town communications, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker. And item thirteen, foreign government communications, none also, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, order of the day, uh, item fourteen.
Item fourteen, for standing committee reports, uh, we do not, we do not have any reports, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Next item is item fifteen, special committee reports, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Next item is item sixteen, for assignment of measures and communications. We have a referral sheet number twenty dash one oh five.
Okay, Chairman and members, uh, review that for your planning purposes. Okay, next item.
The next item is item seventeen, unfinished business, none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, item made in bill calendar, first bill, Chief Clerk.
The first bill is C P number twenty dash two forty-six, C D one. For first reading, C P number twenty dash two forty-six, C D one is a bill for an act to award us, award a seven percent increase in annual salary for all full-time employees of the Federated States of Margonisha's national government, public service system, and for other purposes.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session, Chairman Wally.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to defer action on C P number twenty dash two nine one till Monday.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that C P number twenty dash two nine one be deferred to Monday's session. Those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed no, motion carried. C P number twenty dash two nine one is deferred to, uh, Monday's session. Next bill.
The next bill is C P number twenty dash two ninety-two for second and final reading. C P number twenty dash two ninety-two is a bill for an act to amend sections one, eight, and nine of public law number twenty dash one thirty-one as amended by public laws numbers twenty dash one fifty-four and twenty dash one fifty-nine in order to appropriate ten million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars of additional funds from the General Fund of the Federated States of Margonisha for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen to provide funding for the National Scholarship and the EBSM Trust Fund and for other purposes.
Chairman Berman.
I got issues education.
Short recess, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Uh, we're on the next bill and-
Speaker, yes, thank you. Good morning to you, vice floor members and all that are observing our session this morning. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion on C P twenty dash two ninety-two for second and final reading.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading. C P number twenty dash two nine two, discussion. Speaker, discussion. Yes, Chairman Berman.
I have few amendments on the said bill, but I'll read the first one. It's, I'd like to make a written amendment and I believe it's been, uh, copied and distributed to all members. It's, it's pretty lengthy, the first one. The, so I asked that we dispense a reading of it. So, so move with the written amendment.
Okay. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Uh, Chairman Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the written amendment that was discussed, the lengthy one, so move for its adoption.
Okay. It's moved and seconded that the first offer for amendment to C P twenty dash two ninety-two by Chairman Berman be adopted and because of its length, we will dispense with its reading. It's a four-page amendment. And, uh, floor leader, motion to suspend.
Move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our action on that particular amendment.
It's moved and seconded that, uh, the relevant rules, specifically the rules prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading be suspended. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no, motion carried. The relevant rules are now suspended. So, we are on the offer for, first offer for amendment. Uh, and it's motion to adopt. Short recess. Uh, we're now in discussion of the, uh, first offer for amendment by Chairman Berman. Discussion. Can you explain your amendment?
On the first one?
Yes, well, the one that's under consideration now.
Okay, thank you, Speaker. If you look at the last page of the written amendment, the purpose of the amendment to appropriate an additional fifty thousand pair member in contractual service under delegation offices.
Okay, there you have it. Chairman Ursimal.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, um.
Convince I, convince me.
I, uh, I want to offer an oral amendment or the amendment, but I don't know where to put it because it's, it's all, it's a very long amendment. Uh, and the attempt here is to reduce the amount from fifty to, uh, maybe twenty. So, I don't know how to-
Short recess.
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. We're still, uh, discussing the offer for amendments. First, uh, questions being called for. If there's no objection, uh, debate on that offer for amendment is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the offer, first offered for amendment to C P twenty dash two ninety-two by Chairman Berman say yes.
Yes.
Opposed nay, motion carried. The offered, uh, for amendments to C P twenty dash two ninety-two is adopted. Are adopted. We now have C D one. Chairman Berman.
Yes, thank you. I have also have a second amendment on the said bill and it's a pretty short one and if can we have our chief clerk go read it.
That's the dialysis machine?
Yeah.
Okay, uh. Chief Clerk, read that into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Spe- Speaker. We have a floor amendment to C P number twenty dash two ninety-two, C D one offered by Senator Fernias Berman. Item one, page fifteen, line twenty-four, delete one hundred forty thousand and insert the figure three hundred thousand and lo thereof.
Okay, motion for passage.
So move.
It's moved and seconded that the offered, second offered for amendment to C P twenty dash two ninety-two, uh, C D one by Chairman, uh, Berman be adopted. Discussion. Any discussion? Uh, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. We're still discussing the second, uh, floor amendment offered by Chairman Berman to C D one. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Yes.
Uh, may I just ask, uh, now that we, uh, we're going to appropriate another three hundred uh, with the one that we already appropriated, uh, so how much would it be?
Three hundred. It's actually, uh, we already appropriated, uh, hundred and forty on our last session. So we're just adding on to it to make it three hundred.
Okay, any further discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the offered for amendments to C P number twenty dash two ninety-two, C D one by Chairman Berman say yes. Opposed nay, motion carried. The offered floor amendments to C P number twenty dash two ninety-two, C D one by Chairman Berman are adopted. Okay, next. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session.
And thank you very much, Speaker. On the third amendment, may I ask the chief clerk to read it?
Chief Clerk.
Yes, uh, we have another floor amendment to C P number twenty dash two ninety-two, C D two offered by Senator Fernias Berman. Item one, page five, following line twenty-five, insert subsection P to twenty nineteen Pacific Games, one hundred fifty thousand.
So move, Mr. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that the offered for amendments to C P number twenty dash two ninety-two, C D one by Chairman Berman be adopted. Uh, let the records reflect that the relevant rules are still suspended. So discussion.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still discussing the. Okay, questions being called for. There is no objection. Debate is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offered floor amendment to C P number twenty dash two ninety-two, C D two by Chairman Berman say yes. Opposed nay, motion carried. The offered for amendments to C P twenty dash two ninety-two, C D two are adopted by Congress. We now have C D three. Okay, any further discussion on C D three? Chairman Ursimal.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the bill, uh, to see, uh, C P number two ninety-two, C D three be deferred to Monday, uh, session.
It's moved and seconded that, uh, C P number twenty dash two ninety-two, C D three be deferred to Monday's session. Those in favor say yes, opposed no, motion carried. Set bill, twenty two ninety-two, C D three is deferred to Monday's session. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
The next bill is C P number twenty dash two ninety-three for second and final reading. C P number twenty dash two hundred ninety-three is a bill for an act to amend public law number twenty dash one sixty by amending section one thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the State of Chuk and for other purposes.
Okay, Floor Leader Harper.
So move for adoption of the said bill on second and final reading.
Any second? It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C P number twenty dash two ninety-three. Discussion.
Speaker.
Discussion. Yes, uh, floor leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have an oral amendment to make on the said bill, but before I do it.
Okay.
I move to, to suspend the rule that require written report, uh, re- written amendments and the one that prohibit, uh, substantive amendment on second reading. I saw move, Mr. Speaker.
Those, uh, there's no objection. Those, uh, rules are still suspended up to this point, so. Make your motion.
Speaker, I move that, uh, the following amend, oral amendment be included on the bill on page two, two of three. Uh, line A, where it says, unretireders, that unretireders would be broken down into two subsections, subsection A and subsection B. Section A should be sixty thousand for food relief and forty thousand for travel need. I saw move, Mr. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that the offered, uh, amendments, oral amendments by, uh, Floor Leader Harper to, uh, twenty dash two ninety-three be adopted. Uh, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Uh, floor leader, please restate your offered oral amendments.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Uh, the numbering would be A one, A uh, one I, sixty thousand. And, uh, the other one would be A I, uh, two I, two I, forty thousand.
Is that clear, uh, Chief? Can you read it out if you, you agree with it? Okay, so, uh, the offered oral amendments by, uh, floor leader is, uh, item A I is food relief fund, sixty thousand. A two I, travel needs, forty thousand. Okay? Discussion. Any discussion on the offered oral amendments? If none, there's no objection, discussion will be closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the offered oral amendments by Floor Leader Harper say yes. Opposed nay, motion carried. The offered oral amendments by, uh, Floor Leader Harper are adopted. We now have C D one. Uh, any further discussion on C D one? If none, there is no objection.
Mrs. Speaker.
Uh, Senator Cornment.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I also wish to make an oral amendment to the said bill.
Proceed.
So move.
What's your offered oral amendment?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I, on page two, number fourteen, A is, uh, the letter sonar system. Uh, please, uh, delete system and insert night's snaz equipment in lo thereof. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments by Senator Cornment to C D one be adopted. That the relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. So discussion on the offered oral amendments. If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So, let's vote. Those in favor of the offered, uh, oral amendments by Senator Cornment to twenty dash two ninety-three, C D one say yes. Opposed nay, motion carried. So the offered oral amendments by Senator Cornment are adopted. We now have C D two. Discussion on C D two. Any other discussion? If none, there's no objection, debate is closed. So, let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritos. State of Ponte, Chairman Panualo. State of Koshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Ursimal. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for.
For that reason, C P number twenty dash two ninety-three, C D two has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
The next bill is C P number twenty dash two ninety-four for second and final reading. C P number twenty dash two ninety-four is a bill for an act to amend public law number twenty dash one fifty-one by amending section one thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the State of Chuk and for other purposes.
Okay, Floor Leader Harper.
Move for adoption of said bill on second and final reading.
Any second. It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C P number twenty dash two ninety-four. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection, debate is closed. Let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritos. State of Ponte, Chairman Panualo. State of Koshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Ursimal. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for.
C P number twenty dash two ninety-four has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
The next bill is C P number twenty dash two ninety-five for second and final reading. C P number twenty dash two ninety-five is a bill for an act to further amend public law number twenty dash one forty-one as amended by public laws numbers twenty dash one forty-five and twenty dash one sixty-three by amending sections three, five, and six thereof to change the use and allotia funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in the states of Koshai, Ponte, and Chuk and for other purposes.
Okay, Floor Leader Harper.
So move for the adoption on second and final reading of the said bill.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C P number twenty dash two ninety-five. Discussion.
Speaker.
Discussion. Uh, Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I presume relevant rules are still suspended at this time and I have, uh, oral amendment to make on the said bill.
Proceed.
On page, uh, six, uh. Oh, sorry, on page five, uh, line twenty-two, uh, line twenty-one, where it says road impro- improvement when circumfential road seven hundred thousand, uh, reduce that seven hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. And on page, uh, six, after the letter R, insert letters S food relief, food relief fund for morlock regions. Item T, food relief fund, northwest region, both of them unred each. I saw move, Mr. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded.
Short recess, Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that the offered, uh, oral amendments by Floor Leader Harper be adopted. The discussion, short recess, subject to call of the chair. We're still, uh, discussing the offered oral amendments by, uh, Floor Leader Harper. The relevant rules, of course, are still suspended up to this point. Any further discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the offered oral amendments to C P twenty dash two ninety-five by Floor Leader Harper say yes. Opposed nay, motion carried. The offered oral amendments, uh, to C P twenty dash two ninety-five are adopted. We now have C D one. Okay, Chairman Wally.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also have a floor amendment amendment that I wish to offer at this time to C P number twenty dash two ninety-five.
Okay, it's not that long and we'll have the chief clerk read it into the record. Chief Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to C P number twenty dash two ninety-five offered by Senator Valik Nakay Wally. Item one, page four, line ten, delete subsection, subsection A seventeen. Malam bigger project, ten thousand. Item two, page four, line twelve, delete the following, contribution to Malam Major Team, twenty-five thousand. Item three, page five, between line six and seven, insert the following, subsection A twenty-eight vehicles slash P O L, Hutwa allocation, Koshai State Legislature, thirty-five thousand. Item four, page eight, line four, after the word designee. Insert the allotie of funds appropriated under subsection three of A twenty-eight. Of this act shall be the mayor of Hutwa Municipal Government or is designated.
Okay, make motion for adoption.
Move, Mr. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that the offered, uh, oral amend, uh, floor amendments to C P twenty dash two ninety-five, C D one uh, by Chairman Wally, uh, be adopted. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Okay, discussion. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Still discussing the effort for amendment to C P twenty dash two ninety-five, C D one. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection, debate is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offered for amendments to C P number twenty that to two, twenty dash two ninety-five, C D one by Chairman Wally say yes. Opposed nay, motion carried. The offered, uh, amendments to C P two ninety-five, the C D one are adopted. We now have C D two. Okay, any further discussion on C D two? If none, if there is no objection, debate is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritos. State of Ponte, Chairman Panualo. State of Koshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Ursimal. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for.
C P number twenty dash two ninety-five, C D two has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
As of now, there are no more bills, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. The Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Speaker. If there may be no objection, I move that we, uh, turn and come back, uh, on Monday at ten A M.
Second. It's moved and seconded that Congress, uh, ch-
It's moved and seconded that Congress are turned today and come back, uh, Monday at ten in the morning. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no, motion carried. Congress now stands adjourned until Monday at ten in the morning.